Of leagues getting, you know, three weeks behind schedule. And we've never had to do that because we just move our games from the grass fields out here at Brazos Park to an artificial turf surface, surface at Guyer or Liberty Christian.
Are you registered as a nonprofit?
We are a nonprofit, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just, just a point, I mean, it's a, it's a great organization. David has done a fantastic job. I've never, in my years being involved, parents were always really happy with the organization. There's a good partnership with the city. The league has made investments on the fields in partnership with, with the Parks Department. But I did get the itch a year ago, and I almost called you, but softball got me instead.
Actually, he leaned over and told me he was ready to come out of retirement and play quarterback again.
Okay. Hey, we have some guys that, that love the coaching so much that they come back and they coach some younger kids and...
No, he wanted to play.
He wanted to play. He, he's got too strong of an arm, so we'll have to decline that offer.
Well, this council, does anybody else have anything?
Just what could we do different?
You know, I mean, really, I, I think it's a, it's a great relationship. I always consider Highland Village my home because Highland Village is what gave us our start. Phil and Andra and, and all the people that are working over at the Parks and Recreation are great to work with and they make, they make it, they make the seasons happen for us. So I really don't think there's anything different that the city can do. You know, an artificial turf surface one, one day down the, down the road would be awesome, but that's a huge investment. And so we're just happy, happy to be able to play, play football here. I mean, just from a personal standpoint, I'll just share with you guys, and I'll try to make it real quick. When I'm, when my wife and three boys and I moved up here, we moved into Flower Mountain. And naturally, just being a taxpayer in the town of Flower Mountain, that was my first go-to. It was the Parks and Recreation Department of Flower Mountain. And we immediately got the stiff arm from, from Flower Mountain Parks and Rec. And, you know, they, they operate a little bit different and have these like exclusive contracts that they make with these sports organizations. And, and we were going up against Tony Casillas. I didn't realize that he had a football program in the town of Flower Mountain, but he did at that time. And it was tackle. And again, I was determined, I wasn't going to have my kids, my boys, playing tackle football till later in life. I just, there's a whole number of reasons why us as a family didn't want our kids playing tackle till junior high. And I'd never tell a family what's right and wrong, but that's all they were offering down there is tackle football. And so that prompted me through several noes from the town of Flower Mountain and why can't I, you know, rent a field? I'm not going to compete with Tony. I even called Tony on the phone and had a 30-minute conversation with him and couldn't convince him to work with me and to offer an alternative to tackle football. So really, it was just, I always consider it sort of a god thing. On my way out of the, the Parks and Recreation Department in Flower Mountain, Mark Long said, David, I know you're really disappointed. Why don't you head up to Highland Village Parks and Recreation Department? They're trying to develop a sports program. And, and that was a blessing in disguise, you know? Again, it, it just seemed like the conversation start, went really well, you know? They understood that my heart was in it for what I wanted to offer my, my boys. And, and I'm a big believer in NFL flag football in terms of developing kids for families that don't want their kids playing tackle football till later in life. And, and just, it just seemed like everything clicked, everything connected. And it's just been an awesome relationship for the entire 10 years we've had with, with Highland Village. So I just want to say thank you for making this available for us to, to provide this to the community.
Well, that's a neat, and I'm sure that Mark said, head up to Highland Village because they're much nicer and easier to work with.
Uh, yeah.
Let's go with that.
Well, I, I quickly learned that.
Let's just go with that, okay? Well, thank you so much for coming out.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so next, Phil, did you, Phil, I didn't write down the order, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Scott Isaacson with Highland Village Area Baseball.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, sounds good. Hey, guys, how you doing?
Good.
Can't tell you what an honor it is to be here. And Charlotte, great to see you again. Dan, good to see you. I'm president of Highland Village Baseball and Softball Association. I've been president for the past five years, and it's truly a thing that I love doing. I, I moved from California probably about 10 years ago, in October. And over there, they have Little League Baseball in Pony, which is so different. We have rec and select here, and now you have premier. It's night and day. You know, over in Little League, when you're watching in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, those 12-year-olds are pitching from, if you guys ever been out to our red field, a 46-foot mound and a 60-foot base path. And there's some big kids throwing up there, and TV doesn't do it justice about how hard some of those kids throw. Out here, when we're doing 12-year-old, they're doing about, you know, a different distance, 50 feet, 70-foot bases, a little bit different, and they're leading off and stealing more like a little bit of real baseball. But we have a, you know, and yes, we did steal Dan away from, you know, there to get coach us softball here. But one of the things we are at Highland Village, we're dedicated to get, enhancing children's lives through fun, family friendships, and teaching the great games of baseball and softball. One of the things, you know, we talk about baseball to kids, it's technically the ultimate game of failure. And what we mean by that is, you know, if you are hitting, you know, and if you're going to class, we teach kids that if you get three questions out of 10 right, six out of 20. But in pro baseball, if you get three hits out of 10, six out of 20, you're in the Hall of Fame, whereas, you know, you do that in spelling tests, you're getting called to the principal's office or what have you. So it's game expectancy, make mistakes. It's the only sport in around that shows you a person's individual mistake, which is an error for the world to see. You know, you got basketball, but that's discretionary with the referee, and same with the, you know, football or soccer or anything like that. But this game's fun. It's a, I know it looks like boring on TV, but there's a lot going on beyond the scenes, you know? We've been around about 24-plus years. We are a nonprofit, 501(c). Our league is mainly run by volunteers. We have over 1,000 kids participate from ages three to 18. We play blast ball. Blast ball's with three and four-year-olds. Get a little cushion ball on a tee. You have a little line driven out, a little past the batter's box a little bit, and you got circles where the other team's defensive field playing. And the kids hit the ball, and they run up to a base and they land it, it honks as a horn, they go back in the dugout. Six kids up, it's gonna, game runs about 45 minutes, and it's controlled chaos, but it's a lot of fun, you know? As I said, we do baseball, girls softball, we have rec, select, and our storm program, Highland Village Storm's our select program. That's a big deal, especially around here, what's going on with baseball. There's rumors that people say you gotta play select baseball in order to make the high school teams, or you gotta play in certain teams to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean that. I had a team of, I coached for years where kids got cut from high school. And out of that team, I've got 11 kids now playing college ball, and they're playing the day of high school, for whatever reason. They didn't have a tryout or what have you. But all of our coaches are volunteers, they go through background checks. Most of our kids come to local schools, they feed into the high schools. So you got Briar Hill Middle School, all the ones around locally. Let's see. Like I said, it runs off, we've got 100-plus coaches and volunteers. Our board members meet, we meet once a month to discuss everything, planning, schedules, issues, voting items to purchase, how to improve the league. We have 22 board positions. There are a few paid positions, like an umpire-in-chief, consensus stands manager, tournament director, scheduler, which is by far the most difficult position. You know, as I was teasing Phil up here, Phil here, that, you know, start of baseball season, you always know when the snow's coming, you know? February 1st, try to get on the fields, you're locked out because of the ice. But when it comes to our schedule, it's a tough one. Our umpire-in-chief actually trains our umpires. I'd say about 90% of our umpires that we have, doing anything from 12 on down to 14, have former ballplayers. So we get them into being umpires. It's paid, we pay the umpires, sometimes these guys, their first paycheck's. But they go through some training. Some of these guys go on to be high school umpires, and I think we have one that just is now going to be a college umpire. And he was starting our league when he was eight-years-old, was a ballplayer and went through our umpire thing, and it's been fantastic. I'm president, you can, part of these slides, some people you might know have come through here, but that's pretty much our positions that we have there. We have a director of interlock, which, which we interlock with about eight of the other leagues around the area. So some of the, they're light on the divisions, like at 14U where we might have two teams, another league might have one, another league have two. So we interlock with them within the area. We also compete with them with all-stars, give an all-star groups. We host an all-star tournament here in June that we're actually combining with ourselves, Corinth and Tribeca, oh God, what's it up there? Louisville a little bit, to make it bigger and more teams to get in. Like I said, we got blast ball, five U, six U, seven U and eight U, which is coach pitch. Then we moved to nine U and 10 U. From blast ball all the way through eight U, pretty much the teams are formed, parents, coaches keep their same players together. So eight to 10, 12 players, probably 12 players max, which makes it easier to coach, easier to manipulate, get guys in the games because of time. Our nine and 10 and up to that, we have tryouts. And one of the reasons we believe in tryouts is get these kids mindset, how is his tryout for a sport? Because when they go to middle school, they have to try out for football. There's an A, B, and C team. Try out for the basketball. Unfortunately, middle school doesn't have baseball, but there's a middle school matchup, so the coaches get some kids together in that. But when they get to high school, they're going to learn how to try out. They're going to have to learn how to catch five fly balls, five ground balls, and take 10 swings, and that's it. And maybe get a couple days' worth of that. But you get them that mindset to try out and see what the other guy does, how I have to get to that next level. If they want to go play select, they have to go try out there. So the rec, that's why we do that. And it works out great. Plus, it avoids people stacking teams at that age level. So we kind of balance that, which is good, because there are some guys that come in and say, no, I've got six pitchers and two good catchers and that. But it balances out a real competitive nature, and we like that. Let's see. Our piece of the pie, here we go, is we about 50% through Highland Village, Flower Mountain's about 12, Louisville's about 8%, and Lantana Argos about 30%. That's growing because they're expanding here, and of course, across the street, just go to Tom Thumb, there's Flower Mountain right there. So, but that's pretty much the gist of where we pull our athletes from, and our volunteers and our parents. Past few years, HPA has committed about $300,000 in the players' expense. And we, we purchased dirt to be put in the baseball fields many years ago. We have reduced, created a state-of-the-art concession stand, which our food is doing great. We try to get the highest quality uniforms for the right price. With the COVID stuff that's going on, some of the uniforms are getting hard to get, you know, for the travel, stuff like that. And then we were able to put lights in the batting cages a few years ago. And that was actually courtesy of Mr. Vince Scully and the Dodgers, good friend of mine. But one of the things we do is in, in the fall, we kick off our season, have a thing with the Highland Village Fire Department, they come out and they bring the trucks out, they play against our coaches, same with the, the police department. Unfortunately, the past couple of years of COVID, we haven't been able to do that, but I was just talking to the chief here, we want to get that going again. But that's an exciting time. Like we talked about, one pitch at a time, you know, changes lives, it really does. One thing is it's a, you know, let me go back to one here. Sorry about that. One thing, of course, is we're fighting for is obviously more dirt. You know, that's probably the biggest thing that we're up against. We'd love to get more baseball fields compared to what we go up against everybody else. And we have 1,000 enrollment, but we've got six fields. Flower Mountain has 15 enrollment, they got 21 fields. Louisville, 714 fields, Corinth, 811 fields. But through the years, we've been the strongest organization. You see that through the all-star competition, you see that through the play, people compliment it when they come to our, our house for tournaments, when they come visiting us and play, they want to be here. But we've got to limit so much of what we can practice on. We're sure I'd love to open up to many more kids, but we're just limited to what we can't have, and that's unfortunate. So I don't want to turn kids away. Our preseason kind of breaks down fall, about 360 rec players, spring about 581, softball's about 122, spring always jumps up to 182. And the fall goes, especially around here, because everybody wants to go play some football. And we're seeing that a lot now, where they're doing one sport at a time, where before years passed, it was two sports at a time. Rec fall games, we do about 300-plus, rec spring, we're about 500 there, plus end of the season, tournament and championship. All-stars, we've got about eight teams, and they go on play 120 games plus through the month of June. And of course, it's all, mother nature cooperates. Our age groups can reach breakdown, you guys can read through this if you want, but you know, the younger guys play the, the purple and the yellow field. Our T-ball guys play on the purple, seven U play on red and green, eight U, which is coach pitch, same thing, red and green. Our 12U plays on our green field, nine and 10s are pretty much on our red, 13, 14 in high school play on our yellow field. And the great thing about our yellow field, you can play two different distances, which is great. And if we didn't have the likes of Mr., you know, Phil Schmidt working on our fields, I don't know where we'd be. Phil Schmidt has been part of our league for a long time. He works for Phil in here, and it's, he does a fabulous job on our fields, make top-notch. That's kind of the breakdown of our teams, where we have different age groups. And then we get to the older ones here, team and age breakdown. And again, we play mainly on the weekends, we do start on Fridays, our games for rec, Saturdays are our games for rec, Sundays are our select ball. That starts about 12 o'clock, goes late in the, a little bit early in the evening, but that's how we do that. Each year, we also send one team to Cooperstown, New York, a 12-U group. So we fund that for the kids to go. That runs anywhere in the range of $10,000 to $15,000.
Wow.
And we get some of that through sponsors. If you come out to our fields, you'll see our sponsors on our field signs, that's a huge plus. Because our costs are down to, to help the kids for the equipment and all that. We have sponsors come in and purchase the uniforms, and they put their names on the back, because it costs about 400 bucks to outfit a team of 12. You know, and that's pretty much a jersey and a hat. But that's the tough things we're finding out, is the, the supply and demand right now. Based of our 2021 season, our total income's about $318,000. That's through registration, sponsors, field signs, team sponsors. Some of our tournaments we do is Strike Against Cancer, that comes up in the fall. We have a rec all-star tournament and middle school matchup we do twice a year. And then also our concession stands income. Total expenses about $301, you know, because we, we barely break in, we're not here to look to make a profit, we turn everything we can back into the kids. And that goes to pay, you know, for the city use and headcount, our insurance, field improvements, trophies and awards, uniforms, baseballs, scholarships. We do have some scholarships for families that are struggling, umpires. We also have two fields that we rent out, about $6,000 a year over in Lantana Church Fields, we put money into that. We also have a little bit of security that comes in, just make sure things are kind of keeping the peace a little bit. And we pay some of our field crews that go out and take care of Lantana, and our cash surplus is about $35,000. You know, like I said, we take a lot of pride having kids play baseball. This includes the scholarships. We said we have three a season. This is a way to give back to our volunteering in the spring. We cover costs for the head coaches, you know, some of the jersey and hat, we give them equipment, catcher's equipment. We got a scholarship for, John Pauls was one of our treasurer, and he tragically passed away. So each year, we kind of award an 18-year-old about a $1,000 scholarship to go to college. And that could be one of our umpires, one of our players, one of our concession stand people, and that's a pretty big honor that we like to keep going. And we've been voted best sports organization in Denton County from 2017, 18, 19, 2020, and 2021. And we have to compete against, you know, the YMCA, which is, that's pretty tough in itself, but it's pretty neat, we're pretty proud of that. One of the big growth things that I have that I want to go to is I want to create the Miracle League. The Miracle League is kids that are, have Down Syndrome, kids that are in wheelchairs. We did some Pop Warner football back in California. And it's amazing to see, and they get a little buddy with them, that kind of helps them go up first base. And one of the fields that we can do this on is our purple field, because we have new parking lot back that goes back, it's easier accessible. We want to get that field turfed so we can make this happen. It's now happening in Flower Mountain, I work closely with Jeff Fisher, who's doing that. And hopefully, one of these days, we'll be here, come present it to you. I'm looking to get costs associated with that, hopefully have a big sponsor help pay for that. But that's one of our big goals, having a Miracle League here would be remarkable. It's something really neat, just, you know, the, the kids that get to be buddies learn really some, how privileged they are and how they can really be caring and helpful. And of course, our future, and Phil knows, I always beg for, for copperus. Now, one time many years ago, we had four fields there. When Texas DOT did their thing, we lost the four fields, and that was about 56 practice slots a week. And that's kind of where we're fighting to get it, you know? And it's, it's hard getting everybody on those unity fields, it's fantastic, as they are. We have a little bit of area in the outfield, but coaching, teaching, and what they put in the games, I think the teaching part's what comes the most important. So that's kind of where we're going at it. And what I have here also for you guys is, like I said, we give a little nice awards, and we don't give trophies out anymore, the kids really go for big things like this.
Is there championship rings?
Oh, how cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, my. That's heavy. That's a weapon.
Thank you.
And Dan's got to win this year.
Wow. Ah, there you go.
Now, here you go. And I have a couple more.
Scott, we have a mayor for the day.
I'll say, I had to earn my first one, so this is nice to have to just get this.
Wow. That's pretty nice. Hey, what about our mayor for the day?
I'm going to give her one, yes.
This is...
So I'm open for any questions you guys might have.
This is crazy, this is heavy.
Yeah, the kids love it. And the parents love it too, because there's less mantle space.
Yes.
You know, you get these big hoop trophies.
Totally.
Pardon me?
Or the diamond rule?
No, I wish they were.
Could be a weapon.
Council, does anybody have any questions?
Well, I just, I just wanted to highlight, you know, you mentioned at the end here, copperus, and the, the difficulty with practice slots. And maybe Phil can speak to this too, where, where things are in those discussions. I know that copperus is a little bit of a hold right now, because we don't know what Texas Dot's going to do. But just speak to how, really how difficult it is for teams to get practice times, especially when you're competing with, you know, kickball and Corum Deo and all that.
Yeah, the other, there's, yeah, and we have, there's, on Wednesday nights, the city runs a wonderful adult kickball league, but they take two of the fields. And I'm not complaining, because they, they enjoy the fields too. But that kills about six practice, three practice lots of field. Each team gets about 90 minutes on the field, and that's tough. When the kids get out of school, you've got to run six to 7:30, 7:30 to 9:00. And you get the batting cage slots, which we're, we've got a little more of, which are about an hour long. So these kids are working about two and a half hours a week on their skills, but basically on the field for 90 minutes. And that's the tough part. If we can get people double practices, or another hour somewhere else in the field, their skill is going to get that much better, which will be that more representative in the high schools and going forward. And it's tough, because like I said, we have to limit how many teams we can have. When you got four nine-U teams and four 10-U teams trying to use red on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and a Thursday, it's tough to squeeze everybody in there fairly. And then we have our games Fridays and Saturdays, and then on Sundays elsewhere. Because that's the difference between rec and select. Rec plays on the Saturdays, and the select plays on the Sundays, because they get ready for their tournaments as well. But that's the biggest thing we have, is the...
And in softball in particular, it's a rapidly, rapidly growing sport.
We have, we have exploded in the softball, I mean, especially when we got the gray field. We used to have less than 100, and now we've got 160, 170 girls. And our select team, we used to only have three, now we've got five of our Lady Storm. And we have a great relationship with Marcus Softball, and they have that. But if we can get more, it's going to keep our league stronger. Like I said, down the street is Flower Mountain with 21. And they run things a little bit different over there that I do and don't agree with, but I think we run a better league. And that's why they want to come over here and, and use some, tie in with us with another tournament too, so.
Remind me of the cost per child?
It varies through age division. For instance, like our blast ball's about $100, okay? And what we do with that is we provide our blast ball guys, we pay for the uniforms there and take care of the coaches. When you get higher up, it goes about $150, $160 for the rec. Select is obviously a little bit more, and that runs about $175. And that's just per season, you know, for fall and the spring. But what that covers is pretty much the cost of the umpires. Like, you know, going off what, what the gentleman was saying here about football, umpires getting really hard to come by. And it's not so much that they don't want to work, it's the outside influence of the parents that yell at these fine young men for a play. This is just a game.
And women.
It is, it is brutal what goes on in the stands, but we try to control that. And I feel sorry for these young men, and these are just teenagers. They're more scared of these adults when they get behind the plate and call balls and strikes, you know? And, you know, it's, it's tough. Like I tell our coaches two things, you got umpires that call a strike here on your team, he calls, that's his strike zone, nothing you do about it. But, you know, I tell our parents, be your son's biggest fan, that's the best you can be. You know, these guys are out there doing their best, and I'm sure it's affecting everywhere that's going on, you know, so.
Wow. Do you have a scholarship program for someone who...
Yeah, we offer three scholarships in spring, three scholarships in the fall. When we have some parents come in, whether it's, we've had some unfortunate family situations where they need it, and we take care of them. You know, right now, we're taking care of a family of three that had a tragedy of, of part of their home burnt. And, you know, we said, we're just going to let you guys play for free, we're going to take care of you guys, because it gets them out of the light of the thing that's going on, and that's a great thing we like to do. And if they come to us and that, we find it, we take care of them as best we can.
Thank you. Council, does anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. For coming out, we appreciate it.
Guys, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Dan, I wanted to make sure that I answered your question. Your question was specific about copperus and knowing where we are right now on copperus branch. We went through the master planning process, and, and one of the things that came out was also adult sports. It's an area that we're lacking in the city, it's an area that has opportunity, and we do, we do get calls from time to time for adult programming, like adult soccer, adult football, and things like that. And that's, copperus branch was one of those areas that was identified in the master planning process to, to try to bring adult sports out there with lighted fields. So that's, that's one of the usage that we would use in addition to that. Football has very limited space. We, we're just small. We do a lot in the city, a tremendous amount in the city. But as you can see, just from talking, the, the two presentations, how excellent they do with providing new sports. And it's a high demand when you do it well. That's, that, that's a known fact across the metroplex. If you're doing it well, people are willing to travel, and that's what they're doing. The, the future of this is to develop partnerships with Lantana Double Oak and some of these other places where we're pulling kids in from Highland Village and get them to start building infrastructure to help Highland Village Area Baseball and Softball Association, and, and get them to build fields to help share in the responsibility of providing sports services for their, for their communities as well. And we, me and Scott Isaacson have had conversations about that, and it's going to warrant some more as we move forward in the future.
There was some talk at one point not too long ago about building a kickball field, is that right? Did I hear correctly about that?
I haven't heard about that.
Somebody had the idea?
Yeah, but in the future, that may be a, a something that we may do, need to discuss, for sure.
Put in the bucket here.
Yeah. Is there any other questions before we move on? Yeah. Is there any other questions before we move on? All right. So I'm going to invite Mark Grammish up with Glassa Greater Lewisville Area Soccer Association.
Back in Catholic school, we played that in the parking lot behind the gym. So do that anywhere. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you today. Hope everything's going well for you. I tried to keep my presentation to the 10 minutes I was told I was going to get. So if you have questions about anything that I don't cover, feel free to ask and I'd be happy to share with the answers on what's got going on. So does this, anyway, Glassa, as you may know, we are, been around since 1975. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We are pretty much entirely a volunteer organization, all of our coaches, all of our board members. We pay contractors for some scheduling for referee development. As mentioned, I brought a couple of Highland Village residents with me today. You may know. I've got Daniel Nunez is our director of referees on the end. And you may know Fred Bushy as well. Fred is one of our lead instructors for our referees and runs clinics for us and mentors our referees on, on weekends as well. So they wanted to come and see how well I could do. Glassa is associated with US Soccer through US Youth Soccer and North Texas State Soccer Association. And, you know, our goal is to teach the game to the kids, let the kids have good experiences and then move on as, as well as they fit. Currently, Glassa registered 500, or 5,881 players over the 21-22 season. Some of these numbers are 240 recreational teams and that's for this coming spring season for Glassa. We've got 25 adult teams going on right now. We've registered 133 competitive teams. And for Highland Village, we also have a program called the Tiny Tykes, which is for the little kids, you know, the three, four, five-year-old kids. It's not really a soccer program, but it's a lot of fun that we, we work with a group called Challenger Sports. And, you know, it's everything running around. You're playing games, you're learning to kick the ball, you're going in there, you're actually singing songs and just having fun with a soccer ball at your foot. And it just, and it gets the kids engaged in a little bit of foot skills, a little bit of fun on, on Saturday afternoons. But that's one of the programs we run right here in Highland Village as well. Glassa will schedule over 4,000 soccer games this year. You may know, it's, we've got five complexes that we work with between Flower Mount, Lewisville and Highland Village. And just for the record, every single new player Glassa gets starts out in Highland Village. We use Doubletree Ranch and that's where we run all of our U4s through U6s. And historically, we took a pretty big hit on COVID. A lot, we lost a lot of players. But what we've seen is a lot of growth back in the last three seasons. And the growth has been in the little kids. And it's awesome because that's where I want to see the growth. But we've got a ton of things going on at Doubletree Ranch this year. You're going to see those fields being used till four and four-thirty in the afternoon every single Saturday because we've got that kind of a growth. The other thing that we're doing, and then back to the point of how other people want to play where there's good facilities, we also play with local soccer associations up and down I-35. We play with Carrollton, we play with Capel, we play with Lake Cities, we play with the Colony, we play with Denton, and now Little Elm is playing with us as well. Not all the way down to U4 through U6, but what we found is a lot of these other organizations may only have five or six teams in an age group and they can't really offer a good program with so few teams. And so they come and play with us so that they can get a better competitive mix for the teams that are playing. And that helps them and it helps us get out so you don't have to play the same team two and three times in the season. So Glassa is reaching far beyond just the borders of Highland Village, Flower Mount and Lewisville as far as the impact that we're having and where we're getting our, our players from and what they're doing. We do train coaches through NTSSA, North Texas State Soccer Association. As a volunteer, one of the challenges we have is getting enough coaches that are willing to do it. And what we find is it's usually it's fear. You know, people have never played, they don't know what to do. I mean, I started out coaching, I never played. And my daughter at U5, and it's the same story. They said, well, we'd love to have your daughter play, but she doesn't have a coach for your team, so she can play if you coach. And it's like, okay, I grew up in Minnesota, I played hockey. I didn't know anything about soccer, but I'll teach them how to play hockey on the grass. It works, it's similar. And that's where I started. But a lot of people do that. And so if someone's willing to come in and coach, we will help them out with whatever they need. We've got all kinds of online training. We've got NTSSA training. We've got all, we, we offer them all kinds of equipment so that they have everything they need. And we've even got coaches that will go out to their practice and help them understand, here's a good drill, here's a bad drill, here's what you want to accomplish, here's something that's age appropriate. What you're doing over here may not be age appropriate. But we really try to bring them along. And one of the things that as an organization we've looked at is the coaches are one of the real keys to a successful organization. So we take a lot of effort to try to make sure our coaches understand what they need to do and have all the tools available to them to get that done. Referees as well. We did something Saturday that we've never done before and I've got a slide later on, but I'll just talk about it. One of the big challenges is referees. And especially when you got to the COVID, North Texas, they used to have close to 7,000 certified referees in North Texas. Last year, that had dropped down to 60% were gone. The attrition rate was huge. And then this year I looked at it and North Texas is down another thousand referees this season, or this year compared to what they were last year. And so we make a big push to get new referees into the system and train them as to what they got to do. And what we deem as referee abuse is one of the big things that caused people to stop refereeing. But here's the interesting thing, and I've tried to explain this. If you ask any parent, don't do referee abuse, they all look, oh, it's not me, it's this guy over here. You know, it's, but they don't understand what referee abuse is. And let me give you an example. I worked a game last year and I don't care about abuse. There was a corner kick and some 13-year-old girl went like this and the ball hit her right here and dropped out. What did every parent over on the side yell?
Handball!
Right? Everybody thinks, oh, it's a handball. The truth is, there's a lot of things that go into calling a handball correctly because a player has a right to defend themselves on that. And if it's going to break their nose and they go like this, they're allowed to do that. The question is, was it hand to ball, ball to hand? Did they gain an advantage? Did they not give an advantage? Did the ball go to the other team? Did the ball go through the goal? There's a multitude of different things that actually go into making that handball correct. But we teach that to these 13 and 14-year-old referees that we're putting out on the field. But as soon as they hear 30 adults over on the side yell, handball, it takes a lot of confidence to call it anything but handball, even if it should be. Okay? So I try to explain, that actually is still referee abuse. We have to stop that as an organization and as fans so that we can keep these referees, because everybody wants good referees, but the best way to get good referees is training and working games. But if they stop working games because they're afraid of parents, they don't get any better. So it's one of the weird things that, you know, we're trying to approach as a, a challenge to the association that we're, we're working on. Scholarships, Glassa does award six scholarships every year to high school seniors that are going on. They are not academic scholarships. The big thing is we ask questions of what has soccer done for you? You could be a referee, you could have been a player, you could have stopped playing a few years ago. They're based on a metric that we have that takes grades and essays and everything else into account. The only thing you got to do is, anybody can apply, but you just got to tell how soccer's influenced your life somehow. So we, we try to get back in many, many ways. From a financial situation perspective, 2021, we're starting to recover a little bit. As you can see, our biggest expenses are labor and North Texas fees. The labor is primarily, that's all referee fees. The North Texas fees cover all of our insurances. So everyone that, that registers with Glassa is covered. One of the nice coverages is if they, you know, twist an ankle and they have to go to the doctor and something and they don't have regular healthcare, our insurance will cover that as a supplemental insurance if they already have something or a primary insurance if they don't. So when we look at what, where our money comes from, you can see the majority of it is coming from the registration fees. Our registration fees for soccer are very inexpensive. You can start playing soccer at a young age for, you know, $60. Our oldest age groups that are more expensive, I think we're up to $125, $125 for the season at this point. But it's fairly inexpensive. And Glassa does offer scholarships for registration fees. We, we've never turned anybody away. And if any player comes to us with, they've got a discounted school lunch or a free school lunch letter, we automatically give them a discount on the registration fees just to get them in. We want kids to have the best experience that came. And I don't want to turn any kid away because their, their family doesn't think that they can afford to play soccer. We do a ten-game season. Oh, here we go. So it's $75 for U4, U8, $90 for up to U12. We don't require any teams to do any fundraising. And the way we budget, the way Glassa operates, is the registration fees that we get cover all of the costs of soccer. Field usage fees, referee fees, the rent on the, the office that we have, all of our schedulers and stuff, that all comes out of there. We have additional revenue that we get from tournaments and occasionally we make a little bit of money on concessions. That depends on year to year. But that all goes into scholarships and the discounts for the players. And we've done other things. We've, we've purchased equipment for the different cities and, you know, I would do that with Highland Village in a heartbeat. One of the big things everybody asks for again is, is practice space. And I know with the town of Flower Mount, they said, okay, if we dedicate a bunch of these areas and parks for soccer, you know, will you buy goals? Absolutely. So we bought six pairs of goals that we set up in, in Flower Mount and I'd do the same thing in Highland Village in a heartbeat if we can get areas that we can dedicate and say, this is a soccer area. And all of the coaches want goals so they have something to do, to work with on their teams. So that's one of the things that I'd be happy to, to partner with you guys with, to, to facilitate a little bit better and, and use it a little bit more. When I look at the participation from Highland Village, right now, we just finished looking at the demographics. About 17% of our players come from Highland Village. So that's, that's good. It's actually gone up from 14%. So it's growing. The partnership that we work with between the three cities works very well because there's actually five complexes that make up what we do with. And like I say, everybody comes through Highland Village on the younger ages and then they go from Highland Village, they go to Bakersfield Park for the U7s and U8s, and they play at Bakersfield Park. And then once they get to U9s and U10s, they all go to, to Lake Park and they play at Lake Park. And once they get past Lake Park, the U9s and 10s, then they go to 9V9 and 11V11, they go to Chin Chapel and they go to Railroad Park. And so what this allows is that no one city has to provide facilities for the wide gamut of different field sizes and different needs that the players have throughout their growth. So it's one of those things that, that works well for us as a partnership. And, you know, I'm happy that we can continue that partnership. This slide also just talks about some of the things we've done as far as historically with Doubletree and with Unity Park as far as building that out. Challenges. I talked base, quickly about the referee retention. We do hold four referee clinics a year. Last weekend, we actually had a scrimmage referee mentor day where we had about 30 referees out at Lake Park and we offered free scrimmages to teams and we had 35 teams that wanted a scrimmage. And we put brand new referees out on these scrimmages along with an experienced mentor, working with them to help them understand what's a foul, what's not a foul, what you, where's your positioning, where you need to go. It was a tremendous success. Everybody loved it. The referees learned a ton. And all of a sudden, these new referees that were nervous about getting in and doing their first games, got a game under their belt with someone that was a professional working right with them to say, here's how we do this, here's why we do this, this is what we need to do. The next thing that we have an issue with that we deal with is player retention. And, you know, congratulate everybody here because what the problems we have is that Glassa brings up these players through our recreational association. We do a good job with coaching them. We do a good job with facilities. And all of a sudden, they go to the Dallas Texans and FC Dallas and Liverpool and all these other clubs. And so a couple of years ago, we, we thought about this and we, we decided to do, okay, let's change the program. Let's get Glassa players on Glassa teams, on Glassa fields, and Glassa leagues, all the way through the top. And so we've put together a program called Elite FC. And it's kind of a competitive academy club program that Glassa's now using, but it's different than what anybody else has out there. Normally, if someone goes and they go play for Sting or FC Dallas or something like that, they'll pay the $3,000 a year or whatever they want to do to, to go play for that club. And they go to a new team and they go, go practice, you know, and everywhere from Richardson to McKinney and there's a couple of local clubs, but, but a lot of the big ones don't practice locally. Elite FC is, we've taken our best rec teams. We keep the coach in place. We found practice facilities for them. And we mentor these coaches and we've actually, we bring in professional coaches and professional skills development to work with the existing Glassa teams. And then those Glassa teams go play in the academy leagues and the competitive leagues. And it's tremendously successful. We started out, the first season we did it, we had two teams at academy level. That was three seasons ago. This last season, we have seven teams, five of them are competitive teams, playing in Plano Premier. And one of our competitive teams in Plano Premier is just killing it in Division One. And they're probably going to be playing Boys Classic League next season. So it's interesting because instead of losing your best players to other clubs, Glassa's retaining the best players on these teams. The whole team stays together and we're teaching the coaches what to identify as where you can coach better, how you can build your team. And we're bringing in professional coaches to work with them at their practices so that they can see this. And on Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings, it's still the same Glassa head coach that's coaching that team, but he's out had professional help, you know, understanding what, what he has to do, how to do it. And his team's getting better and better with the skills all the time. But the Elite FC program is growing by leaps and bounds and I'm getting all kinds of people that are interested. I've even, as silly as it sounds, I've got some competitive teams that asked me if they can bring their whole team to Elite FC. And it's like, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of what we're doing. So I don't think so yet. But it, once we start the professional coaching, that trickles back down to everything else that we're doing because those coaches, the Glassa coaches are then helping the other Glassa coaches or they're taking additional recreational teams. And it's bringing up the level of play all the way across the association. So it's an exciting program that, that's doing really well for us and I'm really happy about it. Player safety, one of the things that a couple of the other folks mentioned. Every one of our coaches has to get background checked and they all have, have to take the federally mandated Safe Sport certification so they can understand possible child abuse and, and situations that they need to be aware of. And they have to report those things. The other thing that we stress is concussion awareness. We ask all of our coaches to also take concussion awareness classes so that if they see something happen on the field, they know how to handle it. The interesting thing is, much despite popular belief, most heading doesn't cause concussions. Most concussions on a soccer field are actually caused by two kids hitting each other's heads, falling down, having your head hit the ground, having your head hit the goalposts, things of that nature, cause far, far more concussions in soccer than heading. So even though US Soccer's taken a lot of the heading out of the younger age groups, concussions is still a, a big issue that we're dealing with. And we want coaches to be aware of what they're looking at, how to handle that. We also have, at our older age groups, we bring a, pay for a trainer on staff at every field on Saturday. So if there is an issue, we have a licensed medical person on site that address the issue and take a look and see if that player can go back in the game or if they need to sit down. So it's something that we're taking serious and, you know, we, I think it pays dividends in the long term because we, we care about our, our players and our coaches. So that's all I've got at this point. Phil, I guess my, my, my music is playing now, so. If anybody has any questions.
Council, any questions?
Happy to answer.
Very thorough.
I mean, it's, yeah, great presentation. It sounds like a, a theme through all of these is more fields, more fields, more space, more space. And everybody needs to remember, we're five and a half square miles.
You know, it's funny because I try to tell the coaches especially, they want, they think they need a whole field. I gotta have this. But the truth is, until you get to 13 and 14, you're better off coaching with pop-up goals because it teaches the kids accuracy and control and everything else. You're better with just a blank area of grass with pop-up goals than actually trying to do something on a set field. But, like the scrimmage day, what they look for is to get on a real field a couple times in practice so they can work on set plays, corner kicks and goal kicks and things like that where the lines make a difference. So we're trying to find ways that we could get them on a real game field for a practice situation so they don't just show up early for their game and try to use that as a practice.
Anybody have any questions?
No. All right. Thank you very much.
Soccer is very, very popular. You know, I love soccer. So, and Glassa's been around for a very, very long time. And y'all have done a great job in, in running all of those leagues. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Perfect. All right. Mr. Lozano?
Okay, we have, now we have folks here from tennis. David, David Gray and Chris Brown, right? Did I get it right? All right, come on up.
Do you remember colors, brown and gray? We run Bad Dog Tennis. We've been honored to run the city's tennis for almost a decade. We're at nine years. I was telling Andrew, I can't believe the years have passed and we've gotten to nine years already. Yeah, I had hair when we started. So really proud of that. Couple of recurring themes that, football and soccer and baseball talked about. The city really does make a lot out of limited space. You know, we have four courts. Most municipalities have four courts, don't call their facility a tennis center. And we do here. And I think it's warranted because we run pretty comprehensive programs. The numbers really start equaling what happens at a typical tennis center. And we have little kids and old kids and young people and older people and everything. So it really functions like a tennis center. So that's kind of a cool deal. And then a lot of the, the representatives talked about coming back from COVID. We feel a little guilty about this because our numbers went way down like everybody else's. But tennis is one of the first things people return to because it feels safe. You're outside, you feel like you're way across the net from somebody. So tennis has had a little mini boomlet. And our numbers went way down, but they really have recovered, which is kind of a, a cool deal. So to move forward and just, there we go. So it's outside as you can see, people feel spaced out. And so we've, we've had, we're really back to where our numbers were and maybe even started surpassing. We're kind of proud of that. It's been really a fun thing. So Phil asked us, you know, to bring a presentation of our program. And instead of a presentation, we more or less brought our program. So it's kind of show and tell. We're going to show off a few of our kids. And because we've been here nine years, we're going to show you some pictures of some kids that don't look like, they look like in their pictures. And that's kind of a cool deal. So, but, you know, the formula's been pretty simple. It's, it really runs like a tennis center. It's built on great relationship with area coaches, high school, middle school coaches. You've got to have that and more for them to send kids. We actually, even though we only have four courts, we're able to run some small tournaments. So you get some kids from outside the city and we've been able to run almost one a month for quite for quite a while. And I'll let Coach Brown kind of take it from here. He's going to talk about a few of his kids. He really is the coach, he's trained at world-class, some world-class players and been at the Grand Slam tournaments, but his passion is these kids right here and he'll talk a little bit about that. So, I'll turn it over to him.
I would have been a good tennis player if I'd had a racket like that.
There we go. We still want to get you out there and we'll let you play with that one. We'll even let you, girls, if you can hold up those balls.
Oh, yeah.
Think that'll help you. We'll get a pretty.
You know what? I could do that, I think. All I remember about tennis in high school was we had to run lines.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was bad.
I'm going to turn it over to Coach Brown. You want me to? All right, so the, the girls are up first here.
What's great is we have relationships with all the local schools. Guyer, Marcus, Flower Mound and a lot of the private schools, Denton Calvary, Liberty, Corum Deo. So, we have kids from all over that are training with this and we've been very fortunate over the years of, you know, talking about retention, retaining our kids. We really enjoy a freshman in high school coming to us and wanting to learn the game, but we enjoy it even more when, when they're three and four years old and we get them at the very beginning with no bad habits. So, it's nice that we could pull off these tournaments on just four courts and we have really good relationships all around the area. We went through our files just a few weeks ago and you can see a couple of these little kids here. This one girl on the left is Remley Frye. This girl in the middle is Sienna. This blond-haired girl right here on the far right is this very attractive young lady that's been in our program for a long time.
Grew up.
That is now a senior in high school.
Here in high school, plays number one at Marcus High School. Remley and Sienna, you girls stand up. These girls are fighting for number one at Guyer.
Wow.
I probably have to give Remley the edge since Miss Sienna's foot is in a cast and has been for a little bit of time, but some of the, some of the best players around the area at these local high schools.
All right. Who else we got here? First, we got the guys.
Got the guys next. This, this little kid over here on the left, this is the amazing Kevvo. We met him when he was about four. He's about on his 140th tournament. Kevvo? Right there, he's a guy with the big racket, so he's always smiling and loves to be on the court. This little kid here in the middle is playing number one at Guyer High School, Grego. There he is right there. So, you can see these guys have aged over the years and this is his buddy here who couldn't make it tonight, who's working, but you know, it's been a.
And driving and shaving.
Yeah, he's about six, six foot four now, but you know, the facility has really allowed us to have great relationships with so many people. You know, these young kids that come through our program, they help out with our summer camps and train our little Pee-wee kids, you know, three to six years old. And then a lot of these kids, they come on staff full-time. We've got full-time coaches that have gone through our program and this is their source of living. And then we have a lot of them that are working part-time. So, it's a really good family that we have going and we have tentacles all through the, through the area. What else?
Adults have also hit the court again and we've had a lot of adults that have just come back from tennis after decades of being away. Adults that just wanted to try out tennis. And then Christopher will talk about pickleball, but the adults have, we've had that same boomlet, people returning to the court.
Yeah, as you can see, these ladies here, we've got at least eight to 10 teams that are comprised of about 15 to 16 ladies. So, we got, you know, over 100 ladies that compete in local leagues right around the area that use these courts and travel around and play other clubs in other facilities. And you know, it's kind of like mini Wimbledon out there on Thursdays because that's when they play their matches. Terry and Andrew probably know that because they're probably knocking on the door, you know, needing something. But anyway, we love them and they've been a part of the community forever. And we're proud to announce that we have our first pickleball team this last semester. And so, we were quite certain that that's going to grow really fast. So, we have staff members that are getting their pickleball certification so we can, you know, have some sort of status to be able to teach that. So, it's growing over at Unity Park. Matter of fact, we think we lost our courts over there to the pickleball players, but we're happy to share. So, that's some things that we've learned, you know, throughout our time here.
Just a little history, I suspect some people on the board will recognize that rumble, that is rubble, that is Clearwater when it was being torn down. You got a picture of me? Yes, I look a little younger than that. So, I actually played on those courts on a league in Clearwater Club. A little history, I'd be curious, supposedly Tom Selick filmed a shampoo commercial in the Clearwater pool. Has anybody heard that before?
Alberto Vio Five.
Yeah, supposedly that's a true story of Clearwater. So, a lot of history. Of course, the other courts are Brahim Middle School. So, generally, we use mostly Highland Village, but it's been a lot of history and we've lived it because we've been in the area for a while. So, it's kind of cool to see it continue to grow and prosper, so. We have learned a lot with everything getting so busy and pickleball players and new tennis players back and lots of kids coming out and trying out tennis. We had that balance with only really six courts, well, eight courts with Selmar. But we've learned to kind of make sure we get along, not overprogram because we could, we could literally program classes every night, but we'd fill up every court and you guys would hear from citizens that can't get access to courts. So, we kind of have that massaging how much we should be using courts, you know, to try to train kids and adults. So, we try to be really cognizant of that. So, Phil's phone doesn't ring and your phones don't ring. But really, it's pretty darn close to full utilization, which is the ultimate goal of a parks director. Can you, really, can people stay on them night and day and they really are, it's pretty cool. So, but it's been a great team and that's been a recurring theme also from the other sports too. We really do like working with Andrea and the maintenance team doesn't get enough credit because they do come over when wind screens are down and take care of things. And Phil's already got some, some new improvements for the courts and she's not here tonight, but Terry, and I bet you all know her, she really is the face of the tennis program. A lot of tennis clubs or tennis facilities have a pro shop. You walk in, you talk to somebody, they answer questions. Well, Terry winds up doing that at the front desk at the Parks Department. So, she deserves some credit even though she's not here tonight. So, we appreciate all the Parks Department and everything they do and it's been a joy to be almost here for a decade. So, we're open to questions and you can even interview our kids who are more than capable of. She's, like I said, she's a senior headed OU and these young ladies and young men are right behind her, so you can ask.
Kennedy, Addison, y'all stand up real quick. James? Yeah, these are our young kids coming up here. So, these guys are our next wave of kids coming up, so you'll be seeing them.
That's awesome.
All over the area. But thanks for letting us come and we love our relationship with the city and hopefully can stay around for a longer.
How many players do you have from all age groups? Littlest up to the biggest, would you say is in the league?
Well, we start them at four and send them off to college at 18. So, from four, three and a half to 18, because a lot of parents will lie about their kid's age because they want, they want to get them started early. But you know, in the summertime, several hundred at least, 250, 300, yeah.
Okay.
It's a lot of kids on really essentially four courts. So, you know, they're not all there at the same time, obviously.
What are the fees related to it for?
We try to make a lot of our first classes kind of under that $100 point so people can come out and try out tennis. It is a more expensive, you know, these are team sports probably, and those are expensive too. Tennis is a little more challenging, it's individual sports, probably a little more expensive than other sports discussed in that. But certainly, my background is my father was chair of a parks board for 50 years. So, I grew up wanting to offer something that's affordable, accessible, that's where my heart is. So, it's priced very much like a public tennis center and so, kids can get in. And like these guys have talked about, we don't ever turn kids away and kids that we know have issues, we let them say sign up for one day, but let them attend more days. You know, so we do a lot of things like that to make it affordable for families we know are struggling. So, but we certainly try to make it affordable, especially those kids trying to get in and just try out tennis.
So, I was probably the only one on council when we formed this relationship with the tennis program at Clearwater. So, and it's been a great relationship. We really appreciate you guys, all of you. And so, are you going to OU to play tennis?
Yes, possibly. I'm probably going to play on their club team. I don't think I can give it up after 13 years.
Wow.
Been with them for 13 years.
Wow, that is awesome. Wow. And all of you love tennis?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't want us to take the courts and turn them into softball, baseball or soccer? Okay.
Got the best serve.
Okay.
Best serve.
I like that, I like that. Confidence, confidence.
Awesome. Well, again, if I had a racket like that, I could have probably been pretty good. They didn't make those like that. All right, council, does anybody else have any questions? Thank y'all for coming out. We appreciate you, we appreciate the league and all that you do with the city. So, and we appreciate all of you guys coming out. Thanks. All right.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I love that racket. Okay.
Scott's got a little gift for our mayor of the day.
Mayor?
Nice little ring.
This is, look at this. Yeah, look, I got one too. And look how, yeah, your whole hand would fit in there.
It's a bracelet.
Right, look. Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Just in closing, I want to, I want to speak to the athletic programs that we have. When I first started here, it was very important to me to make sure that I made connection with all of these groups and something that we continue to do. Every year at the end of the season, we meet with each one of them and we ask them what we can do to improve, what is it that we can do to change in the service delivery that we offer? And that's where some of these improvements have come up and are part of the bond package and part of supplemental requests as well. They are directly connected to the requests of the youth sports organizations that we have here in this room. The relationship that we have with them is extremely valuable. We understand that not only the service that they provide is tremendous for the youth sports and also the adults, but also it provides positive economic stimulus as well. Anywhere from 100 to thousands of athletes and their parents show up in Highland Village from Argyle, Lantana, Double Oak and these places. So, we always want the experience to be positive and we work very hard in Parks Recreation to do that, especially Andrea and Fense and the rest of the team. That's it. Thank you.
We absolutely need to look at all options on how to make all this happen. Again, we're five and a half square miles, but there's got to be, think outside the box and figure out how we can, can make that happen and keep everybody, these organizations serving all of Highland Village. And so, we'll do that or I'll do that for the next two months and then somebody else can do it.
Pass it on.
Pass it on. All right, council, does anybody have any clarification on any item on the agenda? Mr. Lombardo?
Yeah, on item 14 on the site plan, we were just kind of talking about it before the meeting. The space is where the market is today or is the market no more?
Farmer's market.
The farmer's market?
Yes.
Yes, it's no more?
Oh, I don't know if it's, no, 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 no. The space is where the farmer's market is.
Right.
But I don't know that the, I don't, I don't know, is the space, I mean, is the farmer's market?
You're a little bit rough, Scott.
Well, we can, I mean, that was just clarification. We'll discuss it when.
Yeah, I didn't know if this was a forum or if we wanted to wait.
We'll wait in the discussion, but go ahead, Scott, you can.
It's tall, people. The farmer's market that's there now is proposed to be relocated into the same parking lot area, probably over closer to Highland Village Road.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to get squeezed out.
It's actually split. There was, the farmer's market was, was ran by two people and now it's split. One of them split off and it's over in the marketplace area as well as the one there on Highland Village Road, well, Justin Road in front of it.
Does anybody else have anything? Well, if not, council, we are going to adjourn into closed session for item, section 551.074, personnel deliberate the employment evaluation of city manager and city secretary and/or 551.071, consultation with city attorney concerning any pending or contemplated litigation on any regular session or work session agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said items. So, it is 7:17 and we are going to go into city managers. and we are going to go into city managers. Good job. That was a good one.
This meeting is now called to order.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Amaya. So I want to introduce everyone that's here tonight. We have mayor for the day, Amaya Butler. She is a second grader at Highland Village Elementary. She loves soccer. She has a little sister and her mom Amanda is with us tonight. And I think maybe your grandparents might be watching on TV. So like, you want to wave at them? All right, because I'm a Grammy and I would like for my granddaughters to wave at me if they were doing this. So, all right, so let the record show that all council members are present on 2/22/22. That's pretty awesome, right? Okay. So we are going to get started with a prayer led by Councilman Kix Miller, and then he is also going to lead us in the pledges.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on our families and our city. Thank you for keeping us safe. Be with us as we leave the winter of COVID and all the challenges that were thrust upon our community. Thank you for the members of the Highland Village family who continue working selflessly to ensure our safety and the health of our community. We pray that you will be with them as they work on our behalf. Please be with the national leaders as they seek a path to peace. Pray they are given the wisdom of history to guide their decisions. I pray that our mayor, council, and all members of our city staff continue to serve with dignity and respect for those who have shown confidence in us. In your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, John. Please stand for the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Honored Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
John? Okay, moving right along. Do you have any visitor comments, Ms. Miller? No? All right, council, we're going to do mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. The city council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, and information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Council, does anybody have anything? Oh, Ms. Fleming?
I just have one thing, and I'll direct this to Paul. I know we're going to have questions tomorrow about our open house, our vision for Highland Village because of the weather. So can you address that, please?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. And as you mentioned, we do have our open house tomorrow for our village, our vision, which is our update to the conflict plan, park plan, trail plan, and FM 407 corridor study. The weather tomorrow, we were on a call with Denton County today with the National Weather Service. It is certainly going to be cold tomorrow, but the rain is not coming until later. So we do hope that people will go ahead and come in. It's vitally important that we get the public input. And there will be other opportunities as well, but it is important if everybody can come tomorrow. It'll be warm inside, so get in here real quick. And it'll take you 15 to 15 minutes or a little bit longer to participate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You mean, it's not a nine and a half hour meeting?
You want it to be. You're more than welcome to.
Okay. Thank you. Council, anybody else? Well, Mayor Amaya and I do, but I just want to run everybody before we do our proclamation that early voting is going on. It is, early voting is through Friday. So if you have not voted, you can vote here in Highland Village, no matter where you live in the district, you can vote in Highland Village or wherever you, wherever you want to, as long as it's early voting. And then, of course, election day is March 1st. So, all right, mayor, you want to come with me? Come on. I didn't wear anything with a pocket. I'm going to have to hold this. I wasn't thinking today. Okay, I'm going to give you this to hold so mom can, you can get a picture with that, and I'm going to read the proclamation. All right? Whereas the city of Highland Village is served by and is proud to support the Louisville Independent School District, and whereas the city of Highland Village recognizes that current LISD students are the future leaders of our city, county, state, and nation, and whereas Highland Village Elementary School has provided Highland Village students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade with a high-quality education, and whereas the city of Highland Village offered a mayor-for-the-day opportunity to one lucky student, and Highland Village Elementary's second-grade student, Amaya Butler, was a successful recipient. Now therefore I, on behalf of the city council and staff, Charlotte Wilcox, mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby congratulate and recognize Amaya Butler as mayor for the day in the city of Highland Village. Congratulations. You want to, you want to say anything? Okay, I have a question for you. Did the fire department ask for a raise when you were over there?
No.
No?
That's a first.
My goodness, that's a first. Well, good, because you went over there and told them, right? No raises. She had no, whether I'm kidding or not. All right. Well, congratulations on being mayor for the day.
Thank you.
All right. I think mom said you were going to, you've got a lot of goodies. Y'all are going to slip out, but we have a whole bunch of stuff up here for you to grab. You want to give that to mom and then we'll get the rest of the stuff? It's okay. Amaya, we thank you for coming out and being mayor for the day. Did you learn a lot and have fun?
Yeah.
Awesome. Oh, yeah, we have to get the microphone. All right, you have a lot of stuff here. Come on, I'll help you. Well, I will. Remember to grab that. Yes. Okay. And I think you're, you're welcome. Thank you. Oh, I'm so glad. I'm so glad. Bye, Amaya. Have fun at school tomorrow and come back anytime. So I tried to get her to say, to let me leave and her run the meeting. She didn't go for it. She said, no. I could have gone to the coffee shop. Is she adorable or what? Okay. Now, we're going to move on. Council, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Council, does anybody want to move anything? Oh, I skipped right over food again.
Foodie Friday.
Foodie Friday. I am so sorry. We're going to do the consent agenda and then we're going to go back because I already read it. I'm not reading, reading it again. So council, here's, here's the consent agenda. Consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on February the 8th, 2022. Consider resolution 2022-2988 authorizing annual payment to integrated computer systems for public safety, CAD and RMS software maintenance. And number 12, consider resolution 2022-2989 awarding and authorizing an agreement with SRH Landscape for the FM 2499 Corridor Maintenance Service Project. Mr. Heslop?
I move that we approve items 10 through 12 on the consent agenda as read.
Okay, Mr. Feaster?
I will second that.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. He carries 7-0. Now, council, we're going to do the city manager and staff reports. And we have a Foodie Friday video.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Foodie Friday DFW. And in partnership with the Highland Village Business Association, we are here at Snuffers at the shops at Highland Village. Let's take a minute, meet our brand director, Jesse, and find out what's happening right here at Snuffers. Jesse, thank you so much.
Oh, thanks for, thanks for being here. I really appreciate it.
You bet. I mean, Snuffers, you guys have been here since the shops at Highland Village opened.
We have.
And it's 2 o'clock in the afternoon right now. There's like between 30 and 40 people here eating. My gosh.
You know, it's been a, it's been a long process for us as we, you know, been part of the community and just tried to build our credibility and allow people to come in and enjoy our food. And over the years, things have gotten better and better for us. And we do more business today than we've ever done. So we're, we're super excited to be here. We love being part of this community, and we hope to be here for, you know, many years to come.
Yeah, well, Highland Village, I know especially the Highland Village Police Department appreciates you. Every time they have their annual Texas Fall PD Fund, you guys always participate. And two, three times a year, you have a specific menu item, the back to blue- And two, three times a year, you have a specific menu item, the Back the Blue Burger. And a portion of those proceeds goes to that fund.
Correct. Correct, yeah. It's very important to us to, to support our local communities, to support our local law enforcement. And, you know, it's just a small way that we can, we can give back to the community that's supported us so well over the years.
But that's not all. I mean, there's other venture involved in too. It seems like every time I turn around, Snuffers is involved in something.
We are. And so it's, it's very important to us to be involved with the community in every way we can. We're part of, we donate to St. Jude's every year with a, with a burger that one of the patients from St. Jude's makes for us. And we actually take their recipe and then use that as one of our limited-time offers.
Right. Very cool. But I'm going to have to ask you a very important question because Foodie Friday is about the food.
It is.
And you guys invented the cheddar fry.
We sure did.
I mean, talk about heaven on a plate.
We sure did. So, uh, years and years ago, when Snuffers came to be, you know, making a, a signature item that no one else had was very, very important to the brand. And so we started off with hand-cut fries. We started off with an aged, 90-day aged Wisconsin cheddar. That's a, it's a very expensive cheese that melts better than anything else that you can get on a fry. Uh, fresh bacon, the finest jalapenos we could find, the freshest chives that we could have. And it's just become a cultural, cultural phenomenon.
I want you to know that I take cheddar fries very seriously. All right? And hamburgers and a few things. I love them. But you know, let's talk about this. I mean, we're going to, I want to get right into it. What are you going to share with us today?
We're going to make a few different things for you today. We're going to show you our cheddar fries, obviously. Uh, we're going to show you our Dr. Pepper Bacon Burger. It's a, it's a phenomenal burger. It's, it's something that I'm very proud of personally. We're going to make you our fried pickles, our fried mushrooms. Uh, and then we're going to show you our, our newest margarita, the Snufferita, which we've changed over the last six months to become even more of a premium drink than it ever was before. We'll show you a couple of our great draft beers. And we'll see what you think from that.
Dude, that food sounds so good. I'm looking forward to trying that. But before I do, one last question. If you could tell 10,000 people one thing about Snuffers here in Highland Village, look into the camera, what would you say?
I would say that we've made serving quality product and being a part of the community, a passion of ours for many, many years. And I'd like to invite everybody in to meet my team, spend some time, and have some great food. And, uh, you know, let us be part of your family.
Very cool. Jesse, thank you. And everyone, thank you for watching. Thank you for being part of Foodie Friday DFW and the Highland Village Business Association. Come here to Highland Village, the shops at Highland Village, meet his team, have some cheddar fries. Thank you so much for watching.
Come see us.
Okay. If we could have Snuffers for dinner at the next meeting, that'd be fried pickles and maybe the Snuffer Margarita, that would be fabulous. I mean, you know? Paul, you want, you have anything else you want to add to the thing about tomorrow?
Yeah, one thing I will add, of course, people don't have to come to those meetings to have input. You'll be able to do it online as well, starting, uh, after the first public session, we'll have it online as well. And you can go to Speak Up HV, and you can have your input there as well.
And I would like just to encourage everybody to come out just to see the plans. You know, they're going to have all of that information out. Come out and see it, and then go home and digest it and send in your thoughts and ideas. We really want community input in this. We really do. So, all right, and then we're going to move on. And guess what? We're going to skip the consent agenda. Right now, we're going to go on to action. And we did meet, and number 13, we did meet in closed session, but no action was taken. So we're going to move right on to 14. Consider approval of site plan for the property located at Lot 1, Block A, Highland Village Town Center, Section 1, commonly known as 2270 Justin Road. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, mayor and council. The city has received an application for a site plan to construct a building of approximately 2,553 square foot for retail use. This site is proposed to be a HTO. It is located in between this site is located in between the, um, Current Handles Ice Cream and the Chevron Gas Station along FM 407.
Sorry.
This is a site plan, should have it on your monitors as well. The it's the, uh, it's the browser. Browser.
Hey, Tom.
Handles, Handles Ice Cream is on the, uh,
Robert, I'll show you. Show him where it is.
The east side. Chevron's on the, on the west side. Bricksmore Properties is the property owner. It's a, it's a single lock with multiple structures on the lot. This is also the site where the farmer's market is. As we, as we briefly discussed in early work session, the farmer's market will be relocated, most likely to the east side of the parking lot, according to what we're hearing from the Bricksmore Property Company.
Okay.
Property is zoned retail. Uh, it, it is allowed for a drive-through use. The signage of the proposed building is, is going to be regulated by, um, zoning ordinance. They are building a sidewalk along the FM 407 frontage. This was worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission February 15th, and it was voted, moved forward with a five-to-zero vote to the city council with the landscape plan being updated. And it was kind of just a typo or drawing error. They had trees, and then they moved them out and accidentally replaced them with some holly bushes. City staff caught it, and, and it has been remedied since. So, um, I'm not sure if your drawing, say, holly bushes, wherever it says holly bushes, is exactly going to be a, a tree. I do have the owners here, as well as the architect. And we'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Counsel, does anybody, Mr. Heslop?
Yeah, is this, is the property on land lease, ground lease?
Ground lease.
Okay. And how long is your ground lease?
I'm out. You're going to need to come, you have to come up to the microphone, state your name, and that's the whole thing, for the record.
Uh, Brandon Bretherton.
Thank you.
It's a ground lease.
How long? Ten years?
Yes.
Okay.
But two options on top of that.
Okay.
But you'll own, you'll own the building?
We will not own the building. Bricksmore.
So it's a builder suit?
Yes. Builder suit. Yes, sir.
Okay, so land lease and who actually owns the building?
Bricksmore. Bricksmore will.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you'll lease it from them?
Yes.
Plus pay the ground lease?
We build it, yes. We build it and lease it from them.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I got another question for you. In doing the research, we see blue dots showing HTOs all over the state. Is this your first?
It's my first. I have three locations. Granbury, Cleburne, and this one. This will be our first one to open, though. I was, became franchisee in March of 2019.
Okay. And this can be the first one to open up?
It is.
Okay.
And what all do you serve?
We have 26 flavors of tea, a combination of sweet and unsweet. I brought a few up tonight. For the top four flavors.
I'm drinking the Georgia, I'm drinking Georgia tea right now, so it's good.
Which is the best tea there is, by the way.
Okay, let's just go with peach tea.
26 flavors. We do have a coffee bar that's going to be installed. That's fairly new with HTO, but we will have one in our store. And then we have dry foods. We have snacks, chips. You can buy water and ice there as well.
What kind of feasibility analysis do you do to determine that this concept will work here?
That is done by HTO Corporate.
Okay.
And they determine based on traffic. That's really the so between the, the traffic standards meet, that's really the main one that we look for. DFW has seven that are open right now. And one in Bedford. There's going to be one in Louisville that's closed. So they're, they're starting to really grow, and there'll be several more opened up soon.
Just tea, no food?
No food. Other than the snacks, chips, protein bars, stuff like that.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Feaster?
Uh, yes, I, just a couple of questions. Thank you. On a sidewalk to the street, appreciate that. I'd like to now if we could connect on both sides, it'd be great, but it's almost there.
Working on it.
What is the, what is the fenced in area, well, the walled-in area behind the building? What's the purpose of that?
I have the architect.
Is that outdoor seating or is that storage?
I'm going to defer to the architect for that.
My name is Timothy Rose. I'm the owner of our Roosevelt Court of Architecture. The out, the, the screened area in the back is a service yard. There is no seating, no service in this establishment at all. Customers come in, fill up their drinks, get their package, go to the front counter and check out and leave, or they go through the drive-thru and get the same products.
Kind of like 151 Coffee kind of style?
Similar.
Okay.
Only so Yeti.
Do you have another question?
That's really all I had, yeah.
No, that's all?
Yeah.
Mr. Jaworski?
I had, I had two. One, maybe you can answer Scott, and then one for you. The two handicap spots, any consideration to an additional or one or two? I mean, this is, this is the minimum, right?
It is the minimum. It'd be up to the
Okay. And then the second one, this is for my, for my 11-year-old daughter. She's going to ask me when I get home tonight. Are you going to offer boba tea?
No boba.
Oh, okay. I won't tell her.
Offer what?
It's a new, it's boba tea. You have to look it up. It's a new thing.
First thing my daughter asks, too.
Mr. Heslop, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have one more question about the ground lease. So the property does not look like it's been platted out. It, it, based on the lines, it looks like it kind of sits in the middle of a horseshoe. So your ground lease is on what?
It's the whole, what is the acre size? Almost the entire front parking lot from the Handles curb to the, the existing
But does it give it a meets and bounds or?
It doesn't because
Come closer to the microphone because the back, back there are telling me I can't hear.
It's actually part of the Bricksmore Shopping Center. It is not going to be subdivided into a separate lot.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, why?
That's just the, that's just the arrangement that they made. They didn't want to go through the process of subdividing it out and because it's very time-consuming, that could take months. And in the interest of time, which we've lost a lot already, it was decided that that was the best route to take.
Okay. And then can the building be used for something other than a restaurant? Does it have multipurpose or is it specifically designed?
We do put grease traps in them, a hydro-mechanical grease trap.
Right.
So theoretically, in the future, it could be repurposed, but it's probably not, you're, you're not going to see something like a Snuffers or something that would go in there.
Got you.
It's just not that capacity.
Square footage of the building?
25, 25.
25, 50, okay.
And as I said, there's no indoor seating at all. There's no outdoor seating as well. HTO doesn't offer those services.
Okay.
All right. Are you, Tom, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, does anybody else have any questions, comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Jaworski?
I'll make a motion. We approve, um, go back to it. We approve, well, site plan for Lot 1, Block A, Highland Village Town Center.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and we have a motion and a second by Mr. Heslop?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. You carry 7-0. Welcome to Highland Village.
Welcome to Highland Village.
So we're going to move on. We have a, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2022-1291, re-adopting in its entirety Article 14.04 Parks and Recreation, Division 7 Youth Services Standards of Care of the City of Highland Village, Texas Code of Ordinances, setting forth and adopting the standards of care for youth programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department. And counsel, this will be the first of two reads. Wow, Andre.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
In 1995, the Texas Legislature amended Section 42.041B14, Human Resources Code, to exempt elementary-age, 5 to 13 municipal youth recreation programs from the state childcare license requirement under certain conditions. The programs operated by the city are recreational in nature and not childcare facilities. The law requires that the city annually adopts the standards of care by ordinance after a public hearing. Adopted standards must be approved to the parent of each program participant and must include a minimum staffing ratios, minimum staffing qualifications, minimum facility, health, and safety standards. State law also requires parents be informed that the program is not licensed by the state and that the program may not be advised as a childcare facility. Please consider this, the annual adoption of the Highland Village Youth Program Standards of Care for our youth programs, specifically Kids Camp. With the annual adoption, the city will be exempt from childcare licensing as allowed by the law. This satisfies the first of two reads.
Perfect. Counsel, we have to, we have a public hearing. So before we start asking questions, if we have any, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak for or against this item, come forward. No pushing, no shoving. Just come forward slowly. Really. Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing. All right, counsel, we do this every year. It's required by state, as Andre said. So, um, does anybody have any questions? No questions, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Feaster?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2022-1291.
Perfect, thank you. And Ms. Fleming?
I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. You carry 7-0. Thank you. We are going to move to late work session and do review and discuss the city's water leak adjustment policy. Mr. Herman?
Well, mayor, council, your PowerPoint. So looking at our city ordinance, we can't give away water. And so when people have a leak, that can present a problem for them with unexpected high bill. So, and it may be more frequent than you might think. This is a little snippet of a dashboard we have from our Badger system with our radio read, meter reads. And you can see there with a leak detected. This is pretty typical of any given time that will have somewhere around this number, this 287 homes somewhere in the city have continuous water flow for at least 12 consecutive hours, or 24 consecutive hours. And it could be just a little leaky faucet, or it could be fairly substantial slab leak. Sometimes it happens where there's a break in their yard that, and they have a creek behind them, and they just don't know it until they get their next bill. It used to be that was the only way they ever found out, is when they got a substantially higher bill. Now they have opportunity to learn quicker, but still, it can be very disconcerting for some of our residents that get these bills. So, we do have a policy that is designed to somewhat mitigate the effect of this. And so looking at our current policy, basically, we look at, you know, we establish a parameter. We look at just one month billing for consideration. Sometimes these can go over several months, partially just because there's not an awareness, sometimes just because of residents from the homeowner just addressing the problem. But we really think it wise to box that in to encourage them, once they realize they have a leak, that we want them to get it fixed. They need to get it fixed. A threshold to establish for, you know, to do this, we want it to be a substantial leak. Sometimes we'll get people and say, well, I have a leak, and they don't really understand the magnitude where something happened for a couple hours and it only results in a few hundred gallons, which is not going to make any difference at all in their bill amount. But when it's 20,000 gallons, additional usage, that would likely be something more excessive. So currently, we have that where it would exceed their seasonal average, what they would typically use by at least 50% as a criteria for us to do something. And so we want to mitigate the impact of basically the high water bill. So this is kind of a shared, you can think of it as insurance policy that you don't necessarily have to pay for. But all the residents collectively share in this by allowing basically us to mitigate that bill amount, even though they did actually incur water usage. We have a mechanism where we can reduce that amount. And that's actually what we're going to review tonight specifically. It's been in place for a while, but we thought it might be good to review to make sure it's adhering to what council's desire would be for us to look at that. And we require them to get the leak fixed. So, most any policy, you look at other cities, that's a tenet of the policy, is to make sure they address the leak before we do that, or else it's kind of a little counterproductive. And then to limit utilization of that is we allow for one adjustment within a two-year period of time. So, if they're going to, we want people to be diligent and keep up with maintenance of their systems. And it's not like a get-out-of-jail-free card every time you have a problem. And so, so that's really the policy we have in place now. We've had it for a while. And I think for most purposes, it really works pretty well. We do have a consideration, though, that has changed a little bit. And so with that, when we changed our rate structure in 2017, we basically established, if you look at, previously, we had a tiered system and incremental rates per threshold of each increment of gallons used. And then the very top tier was, you know, it ratcheted up to $6.55 per thousand. Well, with the rate schedule we did in 2017, well, that particular one, I guess looking at example to give you a perspective of that, this is like, actually, I've used a few scenarios of ones that I currently have, I'm working on for people who submitted this. They have a seasonal average of 4,500 gallons, so that's more like a winter usage. And, but their bill was actually addressed 59,000, just under 60,000 gallons. So it's obviously substantially more. So the water charges typically with their normal bill would be $32.53. With their leak-affected usage, they got a bill for $335.42. So our current policy basically looks at, we take the amount billed less the seasonal average, and then we split the difference, you know, the city absorbs 50% of that. So basically, we split that other amount. So that would result in an adjusted bill of $183.98 in that instance. So if we look at our updated rate, you know, the same scenario, same gallons, their adjusted bill would be $205.60. Not substantially different for this particular case because really the consideration comes in that highest tier. Where it was $6.55, we changed our structure to have a flat rate for our usage up to 50,000 gallons. But over 50, we have a substantial increase in that. And now it's really basically determined to be, anything over 50 would be superfluous. It would be additional usage that, over and above what would be considered normal. So in essence, it represents kind of a penalty usage for that. So given that their leak usage was just barely outside of that threshold, they didn't really have much consideration of that highest tier. So if you look at a different scenario, again, one that we currently have in play, actual usage was 200,000 gallons. So this was a major leak that they had. Seasonal average of 14,000 gallons. And so you can see that their charges were, the old rate schedule would have been $1,300. Because of that highest tier being a lot more, it doubled that bill to $2,600. So that was a favorable impact for the resident getting that bill. But if you look at our current policy, rather than, you know, the old, based on our old rate schedule, would be 719, now it's $1,300. Even though we have the same methodology, we're splitting that incremental amount by 50%, that's still a substantial bill. And so obviously, we get a little pushback from a couple of instances where we've had this. And even though the city participates quite a bit, it's still a major impact to the resident. And so, you know, our policy, our methodology is within the norm of what you see around cities. And they'll vary from, some cities have no consideration whatsoever, and they're going to pay it regardless, to some that will actually do more than that. So what I want to present tonight is a consideration for an alternative that would maybe address this a little different in light of the rate structure change that we did. So, as you can see here, as the gallons increase, you get more of a discrepancy of, in the 20,000 to 40,000, you don't, there's not a huge difference. But as you get above 50,000, 100,000, you can see the billed amount in the blue. And then compared again to what they would normally get in the yellow, and that still results in a pretty substantial bill for a resident to get. You know, the leak is just one of those things where it's hard to say it's their fault. They just happen, and sometimes you can catch them quick, and sometimes you don't. People are out of town, or they're not aware of it. So again, it's a matter of grace, I guess, for the city to do something to mitigate that. So far as an alternative, let's look at an example. It's easier to look at actual numbers that you can see the impact of this. And so, like, say, somebody that has a seasonal average, they would normally use 8,000 gallons in a month. In this particular month, they used 60,000, resulting from a leak. So that would have 52,000 gallons actually being associated with the leak usage. Their normal bill would be $51. So as a point of reference, our current policy would provide for an adjusted bill of $215. So if we looked at another option where, rather than look at the amounts that we adjust by 50%, we would take the seasonal average bill amount, so it'd be $51. But we would look at the rates, per se, that, so if, going back to the ordinance, where it's, say, basically the resident has, should pay for their water use, this example looks for, well, what if we just cover the out-of-pocket or an incremental cost rather than the full cost of that? So we're still capturing the spirit of what we do now, but not necessarily addressing the penalty part of that upper rate. So this would basically take the wholesale rate, you know, that's what we pay upper trinity for the water. And then our first tier usage, $3 per thousand, would really mostly represent our city costs to maintain our system. So if we were to split that 50/50, so it would be the $1 wholesale plus the 150 of that first tier, it would add, multiply that to, apply that to the 52,000 and leak gallon usage, it would come up with a $181 bill. So it would be a little bit less than what we currently do. Or, another option would be basically the same methodology, but rather than even look at the city part, you would just address the wholesale or just their out-of-pocket cost and mitigate it even further. So this kind of shows you an alternative that we can compare to our current. Again, for this scenario, that we're really just barely out of the 50,000 gallon range, it's not going to be a substantial difference. It's going to be fairly consistent with what we're doing, even though it's lessened a little bit. Where you'll see the difference is when we have a substantial leak. You know, say, this example with 100,000 gallons, we would have 92,000 gallons associated with the leak usage. Again, the regular bill would be $51. However, this would result in $281 versus compared to the 535 they would get with our current policy. And then if we go with option two, again, addressing the wholesale rate part of that, it would reduce it even further to 143. So this provides kind of two different ways to look at it. If you want to acknowledge that, yes, we want to mitigate the impact of this bill, but we still want you to address, you know, the cost of service, per se. Or we wanted to recognize that, okay, we basically see it more as grace. We're, we acknowledge, okay, yes, your bill's going to be a little bit higher, but not really substantially higher than what you currently have. That would be another approach. And you can see with this graph here that as you get up in higher gallons, you can see the difference in how this would apply. So the first column would be the bill, just based on our rates, without any adjustment. The next column would be our current policy, and then our two options following that. And you can see with that fourth option, it's more consistent regardless of the gallons, where the other is going to be mitigated a little bit more, and the chart would show you up above as well. So I think by addressing the rates, rather than just a dollar amount, we can eliminate the effect of the penalty-associated usage for the higher gallons, but still address the spirit of our ordinance where we, there is responsibility for water used, but just reflecting a lower cost that really gets them some breathing room for that current bill where they don't end up with, still end up with a $1,300 bill, even though we've adjusted half of it. So that's what I wanted to bring for consideration, at least for the rate structure, to kind of get a feel if this would be a direction from counsel. If, you know, first, if this alternate calculation would be a good direction to go, and if so, to what degree do we take it?
Robert, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Herman, maybe Scott, you might be better suited to answer this. But you said we're tracking on any given day 200 and some leaks for residents.
Well, we're not necessarily, I mean, it reports that. And actually, and I'll get this, we are taking some, and you're going to ask me why do we go out and address those?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean. Hey, can we mandate residents sign up for Eye on Water?
We can't, but I have some, actually, I have a slide coming up to address that as well. So you're really setting me up for those. We can't mandate it, but we have some ideas in how we can increase our participation in that.
So then, if we know, I assume we can identify the individual meter that's reporting 24 hours' use. So then we could potentially notify that resident by email or something.
If we had their email.
Well, again, we can incentivize residents to provide us with a means of contacting them for their benefit, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's a key to the whole strategy we have. When we went to this system, and in fact, the previous radio read system that we had, we didn't have this capability for residents to do that. And so we had a program set up where we would actually monitor that. We would set up door hangers, and we would track it. And it was, it was quite difficult to keep up with, honestly. Because we would notify people, then they may not take care of it. And then the next week, it would still be there, and we would notify them again and try to keep up with that. And we did want to keep piling on something if they weren't taking direction with that. And then with the operations scheduling to deal with just their maintenance, and it just got to be a burden. So when we went to this, it was really beneficial in the fact that we could take that element and put it on each resident to basically have their own opportunity to do that. The downside is, it wasn't automatic that they would have to actually sign up for it. And we have 30% of our residents now that have, which is way less than what we need. But that's where we, that's where we clearly need to improve. But even with that, you know, with the notification, there can still be a substantial use of water, which would still provide the need for a leak abatement or adjustment policy, even if we had better compliance with that.
You have another question?
Well, no, I mean, that sounds all nice, I guess. I just, I mean, I'd love to empower the city residents to sign up for these free, you know, free utilities and tracking that, you know, we're offering them. And, you know, in my opinion, I would think if we're going to put it on the residents to be aware of this, then we should be incentivizing them to do so, and then rewarding those that are paying attention to, you know, their meters or potential water leaks. And then having, giving them a method of, you know, disputing leaks rather than just having it open to everybody. You know, I don't know. And maybe that's part of the incentive, but, you know. It shouldn't be for everybody that just doesn't pay attention and, oh no, I got 100,000. I can't imagine 100,000 gallon leak.
I have two, I have two in my desk that have 200,000 gallons each, and one that we just addressed that had 100,000 gallons. I mean, it kind of comes in waves, it seems, over the last several weeks, that these are tough.
And can I, just sorry, can I ask how those leaks, what those leaks are that you're, you're leaking 120,000 gallons or 200,000 gallons and not know it?
Actually, this one wasn't aware of it, and it was probably somewhere in his yard. And basically tried to dispute that it didn't happen, and it clearly showed water going through the meter. And it's kind of, sometimes it's more prevalent than you might think that people don't have awareness. Because, especially when there's leaks in the yard somewhere. And if, you know, with leaves and during that time of year, and you don't see it, a lot of people don't get out in their yards unless it just happens to run through an area where they're traversing in the house, it's going to be pretty evident.
Well, a few years ago, I had a leak, and it was on the side of the house that we don't go to. And it was a broken pipe in the foundation. And I didn't know it until my next-door neighbor came over and said, "Ah, you got a waterfall coming into my driveway." So, but my question would be.
John was next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One second.
I had a question for Mr. Kristin. Water lines are what, one-inch feed?
Three-quarter inch?
From the meter to a house?
Say that again, John.
Water lines from the, or meters to the house is usually inch?
The taps are an inch where the, to the property line. And then it's usually 5/8s going into the house, half inch.
So if you cut a 5/8s line, how much water comes out a minute? On a three-quarter inch hose, it's like 14 gallon a minute?
Depending on what your pressure is, it could get up to 26 gallons a minute, 30 gallons a minute.
Okay. So that would be on a worst case, 30,000 gallons a day, roughly, that you would lose if you just had that thing running wide open with high pressure.
Water hose, yeah.
Yeah. So I'll just make one other, I just wanted to look at that because I've left my hose on overnight, so I know what that means. Fill in the pool. Okay, so I needed it.
Pools are another source of, too, where people have leaks.
So I'll just, thank you for that, and I'll just make a comment that I think, because I've got Eye on Water, and it has told me when I got a problem. I like the idea of wholesale rates. I also like the idea that you get that generous gift one time. And if you don't sign up for Eye on Water to do things, be more proactive, you don't get it again. You know, something that simple, you know, it's a carrot and a stick. Okay, my comment.
Dan was next, and then Tom, your afterhand. Dan?
So the first question was about the one pass, I guess, what is it, every two years? Is there any thought to change in that? And the reason I ask is.
I wasn't going to recommend a change. Some cities.
Well, let me finish.
Once every year.
Let me finish. The reason I ask is because obviously, we've got a part of the community that's significantly older than other parts of the community. And so water lines could be older as well, and maybe more common. So, yeah. What were you going to say?
Oh, and again, that's discretionary as well. That wasn't, well, let me do my other two slides.
Oh, sorry, Dan, I thought you were finished.
And then we'll, we can get back to this, because this is really where I need input. But basically, I would like to change that we don't really specify a time in our current policy of when. And so we're getting requests to go back like a year or more, and it's like, okay, no. And I can't, it's hard to address without that being defined. So I suggest that we add a requirement of 60 days from a leak, complete leak repair, and no more than 90 from the start of when the leaks start, 90 days when the leak started. That helps define it, and again, prompts action to resolve this. And I think this would be helpful for us in implementing the policy. And regarding the criteria, I would suggest at least twice their seasonal average, just because one and a half isn't really, if, again, we're addressing more of a magnitude where it's really a significant change from what their normal usage is, and this would just help clarify that. And, you know, Beth is really good about telling people that, well, it's not going to be time we do make the calculation. It's not, you'll get a little bit back, but then you've given up your pass for two years. And so you're best to hold on to that in case you have a major leak, and then you would use it then. So we try to caution our residents when they request this, to just be upfront with them. And oftentimes, they will defer it for that reason. So those are the two additional things I would suggest. And we, you know, we could change the timeframe as well. But I did want to, you know, regarding the leak notification, basically, we send it, you know, to. you know, 24 hours' usage, 30% of accounts. Okay, we are, this is something we talk about quite a bit, and bang our heads in the wall, trying to think about, how can we get more participation? So, we do have a message, I put it on the water bill probably every two or three months. In fact, this last month, we put in all caps, "You have a leak," on the message, and, and then followed it, so, well, this could be you. Well, we got a few calls of, "Hi, we have a leak." So, it was kind of funny, but, and actually, one actually did, and didn't even realize it, so, but, we do that, and we, social media, and we try to get it out there quite a bit. And anybody that comes in, we talk to, we tell them to sign up for it. I have gotten with Lori, and we have databases of email addresses, like from The Villager for, you know, when we, people that request new cards, we, you know, the PD, all this, and so, I have about four different databases that all have different email addresses, and I had an address. And so, I got our listing of, of accounts that we have in Beacon, and then I mashed them up through access, and best I could, because they weren't complete information, but, long story short is, I picked up about another, a little over 1,000 potential additions to that of, of good email addresses attached to accounts. And so, we can, you know, we have the capability of setting up notifications on residents' behalf. We don't set up their personal, you know, you can go in and look at your usage and all that, that requires a resident to do that. So that's the part we, we can't do, but we can certainly set up the notification. So we actually have a utility, one of our utility guys who's on light duty, so we have commandeered him, and, and he is entering these all day long, and comparing, and make sure the email address looks valid compared to the name and all that, and updating them and looking what we have. And so, we hope by, if we, once we get all these entered, we'll take our 30% up to just under 50%. So that's a big jump for us, but we're still just halfway there. And so, the challenge is, how do we get that other? And regarding the dashboard, you know, with that, what utility operation sees, we've talked about that, and we're in process of setting up a system where, you know, we have somebody that looks at that periodically, and, and we're setting up a kind of a policy of, over a certain threshold, they will actually dispatch somebody to go to the house, because oftentimes, we don't have their contact information, knock on the door, if not, do a door hanger, or if it's substantial enough, we may turn the water off, I guess. And so, we want to help out as best we can, but that's kind of subject to availability. If they're out in a main break, you know, obviously, that's going to take precedence of what they're doing, so, so we're going to try to fit that into their schedule as well, as best we can. So, but the key is, as Mr. Feaster said, that we need to get everybody to sign up for this. This is something that will help everybody substantially. So, we're game for ideas, too. We're, you know, we're looking at every avenue to put it out there, but...
One idea, just, we don't have a lot of turnover residents, but we get quite a few, you know, when you sign up for new services, mandatory requirement, I mean, requirement, you don't get service unless you sign up for it. That's for new people coming in.
Gotcha. Okay, Dan, are you?
No, I still had, I still had a few questions. One for Scott. How do we determine when there is a leak? How do we, what's the criteria to determine whether, on what side of the line it is? Whether it's on the resident's side of the line or on the city's side?
It only notifies if it goes through the meter. That's when it picks up.
I know there's, I know of a situation where there was a bit of a debate between a resident and the city of who was really responsible for fixing the leak.
Right. After the meter, in the original setup, we stub out of the meter can and put in a private shut-off valve, and that plumber connects to that valve and, and goes to the structure from that point. And generally, we'll maintain up to that, that shut-off valve.
Okay.
So after that, you know, they, they'll tie in a sprinkler system, so now you're starting to get leak points, possible leak points.
Okay.
After that.
In terms of the, the changes in how we're going to help residents out on the, the overage, I know that in some years, we, this, the fund, it's a, it's a, remind me what the term is, it's a self-funding account, our, our water structure, right, what do they call it?
Enterprise?
Do I?
Enterprise fund?
Yeah, yeah, there you go. And there've been times where it's been a really tight, you know, whether it's underwater, no pun intended, or we have excess. How is this, how are these two alternatives going to impact that going forward in your forecasting?
It won't be a significant, I mean, our, our rate structure was based in with an expectation there would be a number of accounts that would be over the 50,000 usage and, and all that, and, and so, it depends on the weather. We actually structured more towards a base level, and so, even though we've had some, what, summers the last several years, we've been under our forecast, we've still been able to maintain okay, because we have more at the base level. We have, I think over the last year, we had 100, how much was it, we had 30 some adjustments? I mean, it's not, we don't have like a significant number of that, and, again, the, the dollars that would be expected would be their seasonal average, and so, the leak-adjusted usage is artificially high, and so, it would be mostly just the out-of-pocket cost for the water that really would be the difference. And we're somewhat addressing that still with our proposals, so I don't think there's really impact to really the bottom line, given the numbers we have, especially if we can really push this out and, and reduce the numbers of people that end up having the need for this.
Okay. Tom?
Well, piggybacking off of Robert's comment about it, incenting our, our residents to get more involved, this Beacon program that we only have 30% involvement, we already give a $5 rebate, correct, on people who automatically have their water bill debited?
Drafted.
Why not increase that, a couple bucks, two to three bucks more to get them to sign up for Beacon? Therefore, they're noticed, notified within 24 hours, and that seems like it substantially resolves the issue.
That ends up being a fairly significant cost if you do that throughout the city. I mean, we have $5 for the...
Well, it's 182...
$5 for senior.
Yeah, right now, it's $182,000 for the people that are involved in that incentive.
On the drafting?
Mm-hmm.
Not the seniors?
No, I thought that was the full amount, was 182.
I'm, that's what I'm, I don't remember what the number...
Well, it's 54, I mean, in the worst-case scenario, 5,400 times 5 times 12, so...
Pretty close.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a cost, but at the same time, back to Dan's question, the water that is used in a leak situation, does that not cost us money as well?
It costs us a dollar per thousand. If you're really looking at the out-of-pocket per se, is what we're basically paying the opportunity, that's really what our cost is.
So, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Correct. I mean, in the, in the big picture, that would be a fair statement.
Then why even charge them the money? Why even charge, if somebody has a leak, if it's, if it's, if there's no cost to us, and somebody has a leak, and then we're giving, you know, their bill might be 2,600, but then we adjust it, and adjust it, and adjust it down to 500?
That's going back to the, one of the two alternatives, where the second would be just charging them basically the wholesale cost for the leak-related usage.
And that, to me, makes more sense.
That was option two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if it's not costing us big dollars, then really passing along a dollar amount higher than what you're recommending in option two is, I mean, it's, it's money in our pocket, but it really doesn't cost us anything.
And in general terms, yes, I mean, there's, still, the rate structure is, usage is, is how we distribute that cost, but there's still cost involved in total, but in theory, that would match up, as you say.
You guys follow what I was, where I'm going on there?
That's why I presented both options.
All the options.
You know, one, yeah, actually, the first option really shows the same methodology of what we currently do, where we split that city part of that cost, I guess, and then the second option would be just to address the pure, just out-of-pocket...
So then, change your incentive, you don't have to give the rebate of five bucks, you give the rebate of a buck, or two bucks for these, for people to sign up for Beacon, and therefore, you kind of solve your problem.
No.
Not totally, but...
No, no, I mean, people are not going to respond to two bucks.
No.
It's going to have no impact.
No.
I'll respond.
There's not many Roberts.
What's our, what's our rate on the, on the auto debit?
I would, two bucks.
For $2, no.
We, we provide $5.
I mean, how many, what's the percentage of residents who have done that?
I think it's roughly 70.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 70%, I remember.
So it takes five bucks to get 70%?
Yeah.
How many on council have signed up for Eye on Water?
I just checked it.
Okay, good.
Wife has it, I don't.
Well, I like it, and Barbara, I think you have a question or comment?
I've just got a comment. As I see, part of the problem is getting people to sign up so you can get their communication, so you can get back in touch with them. Have we looked at targeting a small area of town and putting a door hanger on, and saying how important it is? Because a lot of your residents are older people, and a lot of those are not going to be using, uh...
Email.
Email or communications like that. If you could get a phone number even, something along that line.
Yeah.
But try it on a small scale, and if it works, then expand it.
Generally, people aren't happy with this when they see a door hanger on their door from a husband, but that gets their attention.
I'm guessing if you're auto-debiting, you probably have an email account, and we should probably tie it to the auto-debiting somehow, instead of doing two separate things, we should probably try tying it to one. If you want to auto-debit, you're going to go on Beacon.
I like that.
That makes sense to me.
I like that. One other question, so, and I don't know what the, what the rate of new people moving in and old, and not, and other people moving out. I was trying to figure out how to say that right. When people sell houses and somebody buys their house, and they come in to, to establish an account, what kind of information are you getting from them when they register for an account?
We get it for those people.
Okay, okay.
We do.
I like Mike's suggestion, I think that's an excellent suggestion. Then, then you don't incent any more than five bucks.
It's all in one package.
It's all in one package.
Well, we're, we work at trying to get people to sign up for the drafting, and you're going to get a number of people who just don't want to do that, because they, they'll pay with their credit card, because they get points, they'll...
Yeah, but you already got 70.
Or we get our ones that don't like to pay their bill every month, that gives us additional work, and so, so 70% is pretty good, we're not going to probably...
Never going to hit 100, but 70 is a lot better than 30.
Yeah.
Well, and we're actually, you know, I, I, that's one of the databases I'm using for that, and we are going to set the, all those people up, and then, once we do that, we're going to send them an email, and then encourage them to go ahead and set their account up where they can look at their usage as well, but...
So we're going to go ahead and sign, set them up on Beacon?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
I think that's a great idea.
So we'll get up to just under 50% with that, but a lot of the people that have signed up on, with the drafting, already have signed up in Beacon as well, but, so we're, we're working at getting it up.
What do we do in winter averaging when they have a leak? You're dealing with these people now, and...
We make adjustment for that.
We do?
No, we basically drop one out of the four months anyway.
Right.
And so, it's usually, that usually addresses that.
Okay.
If it kind of rolls over between months, then we'll do additional consideration, and maybe just look at two, if we, if that gives us a good average, so we, we certainly accommodate that.
Okay, all right. Robert?
Sorry, last question. This includes, when you say actual bill, this includes the sewer component?
Well, this just addresses the water part of that.
Just the water.
The sewer will kind of stand on its own, because that's really, and especially with the high usage, they'll be limited to your winter average.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? So you're, you're seeking direction from council?
I like option two.
I'd go with option two.
And option two, go ahead and state it again, what option two is for everybody to understand?
Option one would, let me get back the screen, so, so basically, option one takes the, their winter average associated amount with the, what they would typically use, and then, we, for the leak usage, we would take the wholesale rate plus half of the base city rate applied to the leak usage, to get their total bill. Option two would be the same, except, rather than half of the city rate, we just take the wholesale rate applied to the leak-related usage in addition to their typical winter, seasonal average.
Okay, so...
I like one.
Robert, do you have an opinion?
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Sorry, and I just, it just left me, but I like, I like one better than two, but that, this was, how much money are we forgiving yearly on water bill adjustments, roughly? I mean, it's going to vary, right? So...
It's not substantial.
So, I mean, either way, we're not making a dent, really, it's just to help our residents when something happens that, honestly, they probably can't control 95% of the time.
And to be forthright, two, sometimes the leak will go over between billing, be over, in fact, two months, and we only address one, so, so there is, there is no perfect way to address it, but I think one typically addresses the...
So I would say, option two, I guess, would be preferable for me.
Down there, you all have an opinion?
Two.
Consensus is two? I do think that we need to put the, the time period in there, and not just be open-ended, so, and I, I can see where somebody opens up a $1,000 bill, a $2,500 bill, they better be calling the fire department. If it was my house, I'd be calling 911. And, and like Robert said, we're really just trying to, to help the residents. It's not their fault, nobody's going to intentionally have a leak, so...
And then, on some of the leaks that are, like a slab leak, and you don't know it's happening, it could severely damage your home, so, I mean, I don't want that to happen to anybody, you know? I mean, it's one thing to have a puddle in the yard, but to have a slab leak and not know about it can be a real big problem.
Well, and the repairs alone will be substantial.
They're spending a good bit of money on the repairs.
Yeah, they are.
I've been there.
Slab, pool, and sprinkler.
There you go. So it sounds like consensus is option two, and, but put the, a time period of what we will, we will look at. So was it 60 or 90 days? I mean, we have that option to, but not a year.
Well, we showed, you know, suggested 60 after notified, 90 from the start of the leak, so that kind of gives, defines a period of time.
Council, does anybody, y'all good with that?
That sounds good.
That's good? Okay, well, that sounds like you have...
I appreciate your feedback.
Direction, oh, thank you.
Mary Wood just mentioned quickly with the Eye on Water, with us having the email addresses, we can at least send them the notification, but John, I think you mentioned a while ago, you look at yours?
Oh, yeah.
I look at mine all the time, just to make sure there's not anything out of the ordinary that's not going high to reach that 50,000. That, that's really important, because you can have a toilet leak, you could have a sprinkler head that's broken, you never notice it when it's going off, so there's little things like that, too. It, it's an excellent tool. In fact, I know one of the persons that Ken had been working with, we met with him about his, and he signed up for it, he thought it was the greatest thing in the world, and it really is, it really helps you control your dollars and water more efficiently.
But he didn't know anything about it? That's what...
Not, not prior to this.
That shocks me, that he didn't know anything about it, when it's, it's in the water bill, it's, it's on everything.
He really jumped on us quite a bit.
Zero on the number.
It's like, we have worked hard at getting that information out, you just need to read your stuff, so, but that just shows you.
In fact, today, he said that we had sent something out, so, yeah, we, we send a lot out.
And we've always been about educating, and I think we've done a good job, obviously, we need to continue.
And people just get so much information from sources, and it's just a challenge to really get people's attention, so.
Right.
We may look at the door hangers, that might be a good...
So all you candidates are going door-to-door, and I'll make sure that you talk to them about Eye on Water.
Handing out flyers for the Eye on Water.
Hand them a brochure, Eye on Water. Yeah, there you go, that, hey, that's a way. All right, council, anything else? If we have future agenda items? Ken, thank you for bringing that forward. Ken, thank you for bringing that forward. So any status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items? Anybody?
One.
Okay.
Been a few things going around on social media. Chief? Chief, Rhymes?
Doug, I'm the poll maker. Chief?
There's been things on social media about shoplifting prosecution at places like Walmart where people are just walking out the door. I don't know if you address it now, address it in the future, but what is our posture? We're not San Francisco where you've got a $1,000 getaway free card.
I've been advised by my attorney to address it in the future, please.
Okay.
I mean, just address it so that it's not...
We put a... No, it's not happening.
We're not prosecuting?
No, it's not, none of that is happening where people are stealing and having to lead us to that issue. It's all...
So we're just hearsay?
Yes, absolutely.
It's social media.
Social media.
No, but I mean, it would be good to know.
Bad information.
We were there today and we thought we were going to walk out with an 85-inch TV and just take it home.
You can try, but I'd suggest, running's probably a better option than walking, but...
Okay, no, but I mean, it's good to hear, you're, you're not hearing it from the...
No, we've, we addressed it last week, actually, with a couple people and we'll continue to, I haven't put anything out on social media for that, to respond to it, but I, I mean, I, we operate pretty much on a proactive where if something's going on, we need to, we put it out to get everyone's attention, not to, we don't usually go out and say it's false. You know, I don't know if that's a good practice or not, but it's not happening in Island Village. Those pictures are showing up from other places, it looks like, instances, they're just not here. And if we have a really good relationship with our folks, as I've told anybody who's asked, if they're not reporting it, we can't, there's not much we can do, but we don't have any reports or even under-the-table information say, we're not chasing after these people. No, they report it to us.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything? Future agenda item, questions about anything? Well, then if not, we are adjourned at 8:45.